Call our regular DeKalb City Council meeting of December ninth, 2024 to order. Roll call, please.
Sisada, Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Powell.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Six present.
So Alderwoman Sisada let me know she wasn't going to be able to make it tonight, and Alderman Powell should be rolling in in probably the next two minutes. With that, Captain Hy-Vee is not here.
No.
All right, so Chief Bird, if you don't mind, would you come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Sure.
Thank you.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, approval of the agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda as this.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
The agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item D, presentations, we have none. Public participation, we have none at this time. Appointments, none. And then the consent agenda. Number one, minutes of the special city council and finance advisory committee meeting of November eighteenth, 2024, minutes of the regular city council meeting of November twenty-fifth, 2024, accounts payable and payroll through December ninth, 2024, in the amount of $2,503,537.50. Number four, investment and bank balance summary through October, 2024. Number five, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through October, 2024. Number six, crime-free housing bureau report, November, 2024. Number seven, approval of the 2025 notice of annual schedule of regular meetings. And number eight, resolution 2024-118, approving the cancellation of the December twenty-third, 2024, regular meeting of the city council and approving the payment of invoices for the second part of December prior to the January thirteenth, 2025, regular meeting of the city council. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any comments or questions on this consent agenda? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
All right, then moving on to Agenda Item, oh, sorry, the consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item H, public hearings. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:03, and this is a public hearing on the proposed FY 2025 budget. Is there anyone here that wanted to speak on the proposed FY 2025 budget? Hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:03. Public hearing is closed. Moving on to Agenda Item I, considerations, we have none. Then Agenda Item J, resolutions. Number one, resolution 2024-119, appropriating motor fuel tax, MFT funds, in the amount of $2,251,000 for maintaining various streets and highways under the applicable provisions of the Illinois Highway Code, Section 25-00000-00-GM, from January first, 2025 through December thirty-first, 2025. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As briefly explained in the background, the Illinois Department of Transportation requires municipalities to pass a resolution such as this that estimates our total expenditures for the next fiscal year, and state motor fuel tax money can be used for salting of roads, engineering services related to various types of repair, electricity for streetlights and traffic signals, and the like. There is a very general estimate of what will be coming from this particular budget as proposed in the FY 25 budget. The council certainly aware that there are other sources of money for street maintenance on an annual basis, and another important one is our local fuel tax, which is going into the Fund 400, our capital projects fund. We are incenting that with another $2 million from our general fund reserve. The total that we intend to spend of all sources is four and a half million in 2025.
Counsel, questions or comments on MFT? Yes, Alderman Smith.
Bill, thanks for this. I know I kind of went on my high horse earlier about this, but, you know, we're making movements. We're dealing with stuff that was in place before I took counsel, for one, and probably everybody here, so I really appreciate us taking some extra effort in resolving.
Thank you.
Or at least putting a small dent into it, I should say, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Alderman Smith. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution 2024-119 passes. Number two, resolution 2024-120, authorizing an agreement for preliminary engineering services with Fair Graham and Associates, LLC, for the 2025 general street maintenance program in an amount not to exceed $165,000. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So we just talked about a street maintenance program, about four and a half million in FY 25. Six percent of that is sort of typical when we're calculating the consulting services we need to perform the construction engineering and contract management. We have a bid from, or a proposal from Fair Graham in the amount of about 3.67%. They have worked with us in recent years on this particular program. They have good performance for keeping us under budget in terms of engineering expenses and also guiding the program to, and then under the overall guidance of Zach Gill, who's our city engineer, we're confident that they'll do the same next year.
Counsel, questions, comments? You know, I think each one of us, this is one of the number-one things that we hear about, is the conditions of our local roads. It is a big topic, and I know Alderman Smith hears about it constantly in his ward as well, and has been a great advocate for what, how can we accelerate the process in order to cover as many roads as possible? And I know others at council have advocated for their wards as well. Four years ago, we were doing roughly $700,000 in roads. Been doing $2.5 million the last four years, and now we're talking about $4.5 million. Is it enough? No, absolutely not. But we have to keep trying to figure out how, I think Alderman Smith called us, said making a dent, but how can we make a larger and larger dent? And I got to commend this council every year, that's what we've been trying to do, is how can we increase the impact that we're making on our roads? So I know a lot of you are driving on some really poor quality roads, and it probably irritates you every day. You go to the grocery store, you go to and from work. We're working on it. We're not going to get there in the timeframe that you want, but we are working on it, and I'm committed. I know Alderman Smith is committed, and I know council is committed to figuring out how we can do everything possible to make that a priority within our budgets to improve that particular quality-of-life piece for all of us. I think we've shown the commitment, and we continue to increase that impact, so we're coming. Won't be as fast as you want, like I said, but we're coming, for sure. City Manager.
May I just add to that and just say that at the staff level, we appreciate the council's support of this more aggressive program and how we've been ramping up over the last four years. The city staff are pretty modest overall, and in the engineering area, very slim. We don't have a lot of people waiting on the bench to get into the game, so next year, we're going to have to get the city engineer in a strict conditioning program so he can work seven days a week, 24 hours a day.
If we need to fund his gym membership, let us know.
I'm all for it. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
I guess so.
Yes, Alderman Smith.
Appreciate it, Mayor, yeah. It is a dent, and I truly understand. I think we're making a good dent without raising our taxes. I think that's something people should know is key. You know, we're trying to return dollars to the citizens, and, but it does prolong some things, and streets are one of them, but we are getting there, and I really appreciate what we're doing. And Zach, thank you very much. I know you're back there hiding from my view, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution 2024-120 passes. Number three, resolution 2024-121, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Northern Illinois University to provide safety services, including fire protection and ambulance services, from January first, 2025 through December thirty-first, 2029. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Current contract was a five-year contract. It's over at the end of this year. I want to thank Chief Thomas for helping me in the negotiation of this contract. We have before you tonight another five-year contract. There is an incremental increase in the equitable payments we would be getting from NIU. There's also reimbursement for special events, not just the week-in, week-out kinds of responses that we may do in the dorms and academic buildings and other things, but we do provide assistance just in case at these various events, and we also have benefited from access to dorms and other facilities during off weeks or holidays when, with the collaboration of NIU officials, we're able to do some training. So all in all, it's a good round of contract. There's nothing new here. We're sort of staying the course. We understand our partner is also struggling with some financial issues. We're happy that we were able to come up with this contract in a very reasonable period of time, and we recommend it strongly to you.
Counsel, any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution 2024-121 passes. Moving on to Agenda Item K, ordinances, second reading. Number one, ordinance 2024-059, adopting the annual budget and non-bargaining unit pay plan of the city of DeKalb, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning January first, 2025, and ending December thirty-first, 2025. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The preparation of an annual budget on municipal level is a months-long process. We've talked about that. We've had the help of the council, the finance advisory committee, but in particular, I want to thank Susan Hammers in the back of the room tonight, our Director of Financial Services, also all of our department heads in particular, who help in this collaborative effort in preparing a lot of spreadsheets, a lot of narrative pages, to try to make how we spend the people's money more accessible and understandable to those people who are contributing those dollars. And we hope we've done that again to your liking this year, and recommend approval.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance 2024-059 passes on second reading. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, ordinance 2024-060, approving the tax increment redevelopment plan and project for the South Fourth Street TIF redevelopment project area. We do have Dwayne Brown, who would like to come and speak before council.
Mr. Brown, just a reminder, three minutes, sir.
I have always wanted united development of the South Fourth Street corridor. However, I believe it should be done in an organic growth manner, not in a TIF district. TIF has received criticism for contributing to gentrification. While the method can promote economic growth, new developments can potentially displace residents. The real problem with TIF districts are they are subject to local politics and political favoritism. Another complaint is they may cause a tax increase to neighboring properties in the district or outside the district. These additional tax burdens slow the growth of other businesses and reduce spending from citizens. TIF takes money from other taxing bodies, especially the school board. The school board takes 63% of our property tax revenue, and we can't afford this. This, we can't afford. TIF may not align with everyone's goals. The entire premise of TIF is that the assessed valuation of the property will rise after a development or redevelopment. If it doesn't, the city is left holding the bag. There can be many parts of local government and the private sector seeking funds, which can lead to challenges in fund allocation. California discontinued the use of TIF financing due to multiple lawsuits in 2011. They enacted the California Fiscal Emergency Proclamation, thereby ending the diversion of property tax revenue from public funding, including the use of TIFs. I believe the districts are inherently, TIF districts are inherently unfair, as they pick winners and losers in the local economy. The burden to pay for TIF falls on other businesses and taxpayers. We have a shrinking population, and the city of DeKalb's budget supports increased hiring. I wish I could hear the reasoning for that. A TIF district would just exacerbate that. A TIF district should only be approved in an area that has obsolescence, deterioration, structures below minimum code standards, and this does not, the South Fourth Street corridor does not check off all the boxes. We've had two businesses that were turned down on the South Fourth Street corridor. We had the one at Taylor Street and South Fourth Street that wanted the deli and the packaged liquor store. That was turned down by the council. We had the laundromat, which wanted the video gaming and liquor. It was turned down, and now they want to create a TIF corridor there and use taxpayers' money for that.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
All right, so this is ordinance 2024-060. I'd take a motion to bring it to the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Powell. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So this matter has engendered a lot of conversation in this building, in council meetings for the last seven or eight months. I gave just a partial list of the public meetings that were held to encourage people to come out and speak for or against the concept of a TIF, and then as specifics were a little bit more clear what that might mean. And I will agree with Mr. Brown that, like any tool, and that's what this is, it's a financial tool. It's one of two or three that were considered back over a year and a half ago, when we were talking more seriously about what are we going to do looking ahead toward this corridor, and what could we do to rejuvenate it? And ultimately, any tool is only as good as the conscience, I guess, and the preparation and the common sense of the people who will employ the tool. And if we were talking about this between 2010 and 2018, I would say, darn right. But we're past that. We'd had our own experience of some mismanagement of a TIF program, and we've all learned the hard way what needs to be done to right that ship and now to move on and do it right. I think, and I'm pleased to say this, that all the taxing bodies at this point, who were represented on our joint review board, voted in favor of the idea of a TIF for this area. They also voted unanimously that this area does constitute a conservation area as determined in the TIF plan and also according to the TIF Act, and that but for TIF, it is not reasonable to anticipate that the area will be improved without direct participation from the city to provide funding. The package before you tonight is on second reading. The council is also aware that there is an intergovernmental agreement, which was part of this process and discussion, again, involving all of the local taxing bodies. And all of it, two of those nine have approved this so far, just because of the way meetings fall. There are going to be two meetings this week, and I believe they'll be unanimous and will come into the fold. So the council's already approved, for our part, the resolution adopting the intergovernmental agreement, which, again, just when you roll that off your lips, that means a lot of collaboration and cooperation. It's not easy to get hold, our taxing bodies agree on one thing. And this is also a surgical TIF. It's not an expansive TIF. Initially, we thought of a much larger area, and that was pared back considerably, more than cut in half, for some of the things that critics have suggested. So what's before you tonight, I believe, is going to provide that tool, which has been missing for many years in this area, and we recommend your approval.
Counsel, questions, comments? Alderman Perkins.
One comment, as I'm a big advocate for TIF, particularly in the fourth and fifth ward, and it really gets to, to me, it's a real simple issue. In the fourth and fifth ward, we've waited for organic growth for over 50 years. Nothing's happened. So we need some type of a tool to spur development on that side of town. We've used the tool effectively at our areas in town, and I think using those as, using those and the processes that were in place to support those TIFs, I think are an indicator, hopefully, of future success with it. So I'm a big advocate.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Walker.
All right. First of all, I want to say I do respect, you know, Alderman Perkins and Alderman Powell, your constituents and the people you talk to about thinking that we need this. City Manager, you know, your team did an excellent job with, point out some facts. However, I have to agree almost 98% with Dwayne here. It, you know, the first ward, Alder Lady said, you know, TIF works 50/50, and that's what we do know. You know, I like organic growth, you know. You know, yes, it's been a while. You know, the fourth Street corridor definitely needs something, but I just honestly believe that out of all the areas in DeKalb, that is the most, that's the best location for organic growth, because, you know, there's low crime and things of that nature. And like Dwayne pointed out, we had a deli liquor store shop, you know, we didn't, you know, give a license to. It's just confusing with me on some of the things we want to do versus some of the things we don't want to do. So just for that reasoning alone, and like I said, 98% of the things that Dwayne said over there is I, you know, wholeheartedly agree with. So that's why I'll be voting no on this.
Any other comments? Alderwoman Larson.
I would like to echo Alderman Perkins in that 50 years of waiting for organic growth, and while we did turn down two different businesses, I think we've learned from past history where it's like, you just don't want an empty storefront, or you don't want an empty apartment, just get something in there. And if you don't choose wisely, that can come back and be a worse problem than an empty storefront or an empty apartment building. And so I think we're all trying to make the best choices for growth down on the south side of town and to make it back to, when I started college here, it was kind of, there wasn't Sycamore Road. That was one of the places you went on the south side of town, and it's not that now. And so I think TIF will be what will be the spotlight that will help people say this is a good place to start. So I'll be voting for it.
Any other comments or questions? For me, I would echo what Alderman Perkins said as well. Organic growth, we've been waiting 40, 50 years. When I was a kid, walking to school there, it's a completely different area now. We've lost the Eagle Grocery Store, and then lost Sullivan's Grocery Store. We lost the KFC, we lost Twins, we lost White Hen. There's just been a consistent pattern of economic development not moving forward in that area. And I agree with Alderwoman Larson, two things have come up, but they have to be the right things, and the community has to support those things. And when the community isn't supportive of it, I'm not supportive of it most of the time. But ultimately, TIF, what we have proven, and I got to give our administrative staff so much credit, is it can be an incredibly effective tool to actually transform an area. And it's been 40 or 50 years, and finally, the city of DeKalb is looking at the Fourth Street corridor and wants to make an impact, wants to really help improve the quality of life for the residents there. So I'm completely for it, especially given our recent history and seeing the recent history of the impact of TIF, especially on our downtown. I can't wait to see what the Fourth Street corridor is going to look like in five years, in 10 years. Any others? All right, roll call, please.
Walker?
No.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance 2024-060 passes on second reading. All right, moving on to number three, ordinance 2024-061, designating the South Fourth Street TIF redevelopment project area.
Can I get a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as the last time, there are three TIF ordinances. The first one is the main one about the plan and so forth. This one, once again, puts forward the proposed TIF redevelopment project area in a mapped way, and that's what's in your background. The map hasn't changed for six months, so.
Okay. Counsel, questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance 2024-061 passes on second reading. Number four, ordinance 2024-062, adopting tax increment financing for the South Fourth Street TIF redevelopment project area. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Powell. City Manager.
And this, just if you've approved the first two, then you should approve this one unless something remarkable is known about the proposed financing scheme that is aligned with the state TIF Act, so.
Counsel, questions, comments? I did forget to address one thing, the taxes piece. I hear that over and over again, how TIF is going to cost money. That may be true if it's not for the historic unprecedented economic development going on in the south side. Taxing bodies' levies are increasing astronomically, and many of them are holding the taxpayer harmless in the process. The amount of dollars that we're talking about from a taxation perspective in this TIF district compared to the revenue coming in on the south side, and will again next year as well, far, far, far outweighs the impact on the taxing bodies on the increment they're going to miss out year over year. Yes, Alderman Walker.
So I got a question. So we all know we had a historical year when it comes to that, right?
Yeah.
So what happens, you know, a few years down the line, when we're not getting all that money, all that revenue in, and, you know, we have all these taxing bodies wanting to raise their levies, then where are we stuck at?
Yeah, total hypothetical. Hopefully, we continue bringing in the historic redevelopment that we've had, and as we all know, the funnel that we have right now is impressive. There is still so much opportunity, so many people knocking on our doors, and Krasinski Construction continues to do an amazing job, and not just in the development, but the attraction of new businesses as well. So anything is possible, I mean, absolutely. But again, the amount that we're talking about of the TIF is a very small amount for the taxing bodies based off of what we've been seeing over the last few years.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Smith? Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero six two has passed on second reading. We're done, right? That's it?
That's it.
This is, this is monumental time. There's a lot of opposition out there that we've heard tonight, let's say, and maybe we could be wrong, but the history that we have, TIF has been incredibly successful for our community. And I'm very excited for the residents of Ward Four and Ward Five to see the transformation over time that hopefully this city council will have a part of, but future city councils will have a part of. It was about time that we focused our energies on the South Fourth Street corridor, and sitting here in this position, it's really cool we've finally done that. So I'm really excited about TIF. So round of applause.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item L, ordinances, first reading. Number one, ordinance two zero two four dash zero six three, amending chapter 24 building code. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. We do have, our city manager is going to give us some color on this as well, but I know Chuck Shepard, who's been an intimate part of this whole process, also wants to have a few comments. City manager, I don't know if you want to kick it off first?
No, I think we'll let Chuck.
All right. Mr. Shepard? The podium is yours.
Chuck Shepard, I've been visiting with you over the last 10 months and working on this, and those, all those books and everything, we've been working with staff and both the fire department and the building department, also working with John Sauter at Sycamore, Derek Kite London at the county. They have now voted first and second readings, and they're all in place now on what we're asking this evening from, from you guys. So I guess I would ask if you can do second reading so that my year will be complete. No, on a serious note, so then we do have a new set of ordinances, and they start on a nice calendar year and going forward. Other than that, I have nothing to say, or if you have any questions, I would answer them.
Well, Mr. Shepard, thanks for all your hard work on this and, and your team. I know this has been a long, arduous process, but.
It seemed longer than six years ago.
Yeah, you ground through it and got her done, so.
Council, questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Did Bill want to say anything?
Oh, city manager.
I'm content.
Hard to follow that? Sorry, go ahead.
It is. I accept just to add my thanks to Mr. Shepard and to the committee and, and the work that they've done this year. And what's before you tonight is primarily the changes in the international building code, sort of the, the largest document of all of them. And it rounds out what, what you've done already this year, both in late May and early September on some other specification codes and smaller codes.
Council, questions, comments? Team other. All right, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero six three has passed on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second.
Motion to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith to waive second reading. Any color, comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two four dash zero six three. Mr. Shepard, your work is done.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Shepard, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting unless you so choose. Moving on to number two, ordinance two zero two four dash zero six four, amending chapter five, fire department, section 5.14, false fire alarm fee, and section 5.15, fire hydrants and fire department connections. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Larson. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is part of this whole process, and, and we don't want to forget the chapter five, which deals with our fire protection codes in general, also specifically some local concerns we have about different types of alarms that are either false or nuisance alarm, which we have to respond to, but certainly unreasonably draw our, our very professional sources, resources away from the, their, their corridors to go to some place and find that there really was no need for them to do that. And this, this can compete with calls in other parts of town, and that would be the worst occasion, a simultaneous call. So there are some provisions to deal with that. We basically get one bite of the apple. Some things can happen. There's equipment malfunction, people that should be supervised aren't, and they pull an alarm, and that kind of thing can happen. But repeatedly, there'll, there'll be a price to pay for that, and that's one of the things that's identified here. Also, we're, we're very concerned so that when our, our fire crews arrive, that they have hydrants in the right places and they have fire department connections, those parts of the buildings where we will connect to and charge the interior system, that they should be in the right place and they should be identifying. We don't have to go hunting in the dark for them and so forth. So that, that, those requirements are in here as well. And with that, we recommend your approval on both readings.
Council, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero six four has passed on first reading.
Motion to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Powell. Any comments or questions, council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two four dash zero six four. Moving on to number three, ordinance two zero two four dash zero six five, authorizing the extension of the waiver of water impact fees on new construction in the city of DeKalb until April 1st, 2025. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Larson. Santa's either coming, or I'm not sure what's going on.
No, there's been a waiver on, on the water capital fee since 2017, and lots of history here. DeKalb, a little bit behind other communities and rebounding from the 2008, 2009 collapse, really went into 2010. And the council back in 2017 and successive years after that thought it might be a way to promote new, new housing starts if we did a moratorium on that fee. And with us, there was also a moratorium on the park fee and the school fee. Talking to both of them, it's, it's pretty clear to us that there's going to be a conversation sometime in the late winter, early spring. I'd like to bring this back to you. But right now, we have some, some permits in the offing, and we wanted to finish the year and get into the, that kind of interregnum between building seasons of January, February, March, and have some time to think about what impact it would have. We are now starting to talk about the expansion of our, upgrading and expansion of our water system, and that's where this money would normally go to help offset that. So there'll be lots to talk about. For now, we just wanted your permission to extend for another roughly four months.
Council, questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero six five passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith. Comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two four dash zero six five. Moving on to number four, ordinance two zero two four dash zero six six, approving a special use permit for a four-unit apartment building at 1015 Market Street, Legend Restoration. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Powell. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple people in the audience who've been waiting patiently for this moment. Mr. Shermerhorn and Mr. Wong are here and will be able to answer some questions you may have. Dan Olson has been the steward in taking this particular matter through the Plan Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission to get it to you tonight. The interest here is in constructing a four-unit apartment building. It's a vacant lot over on Market Street. It is zoned residential conservation district. Multi-family dwellings do require a special use in that area, hence the trip to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the council. As you, as you can see in the background, this particular type of residential construction does align with our plan of 2022. It allows the proposed density in terms of units per acre. The Planning and Zoning Commission had a public hearing on this last week, a week ago on Monday, and unanimously recommended a special use permit for your consideration, and we support the Plan, Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
Council, questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Smith.
Bill, I've heard nothing on this, so that's usually a good sign, especially in the third ward, so.
It is.
Welcome to the third ward, gentlemen, so. When do you plan, when are they going to start, or? People are always curious, when are you going to start? That seems to be the.
And you'll have to come up to the podium to answer that question. That's so everyone at home can hear.
Yeah, we're, we're looking to start as soon as we get a building permit, probably, probably end of the year, first, first of the year.
Awesome. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'm excited to see a little development in that area. It's my, it's where I grew up, and my first house I bought with a VA loan was 1124 Market, so just a block down the street kind of thing. So that's really cool.
I remember the 1009.
Yeah.
Different story.
Dick's 1009? All right, any other comments or questions, council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero six six has passed first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Larson. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two four dash one zero six six. Again, thank you for your investment in the community. If you have any issues, don't hesitate to reach out to city staff as well as your aldermen or myself, but I have a feeling you're going to have a great experience doing your project here in the city of DeKalb. So thanks again for your investment. How about a round of applause for these two guys? All right, with that, we'll move on to agenda item M, reports and communications. Number one, council member reports. Alderman Larson, you want to kick it off?
Just a wrap up to streets for two things. The downtown looks fabulous. I see you guys with the Santa house and the lights, and every year it just gets better, and a great job of the leaves getting all picked up. But I would still ask people if you have a drain in front of your house along the gutters. The leaves keep blowing, the few that are left, to make sure you don't have those blocked before winter comes. And happy holidays for everyone.
Alderman Smith.
Alderman Larson covered everything, so.
Okay. Alderman Powell?
No report.
Alderman Walker?
Yeah, I want to say a good shout out to LRS. I believe the supervisor is Katie Neary.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a few situations in Ward Seven, and she hopped right on it. She, you know, she was a game changer and a game saver, so if you could please let